Like to call a meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all who are listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded both on video and audio. During the public comment section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address, and then we'll have five minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raised hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal they wish to address the board during the public comment section. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the public comment section. Those attending in person should sign on the right, should sign on the signup sheet located near the entry. Comments are limited to five minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions the visitors to not disclose confidential account information or to disclose account information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and the presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you are using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. My name is Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position one, and currently the board president. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, the general manager, David Haley, member at large, position two, Tom Groneman, second district and board secretary, Bob Mylan, first district, Jeff Bryant, third district, Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, district three and board vice chair, Angela Lawson, deputy chief counsel. I would like to ask you to put your phone on silent, and please be aware that microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made almost anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, please rise and join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Angela, will you please take roll call for attendance?
Roll call Bryant?
Here.
Gonzalez?
I'm here.
Groneman?
Here.
Haley?
Present.
Mylan? Mulvaney Henry?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Before I ask for motion to approve the regular session agenda of November 6th, are there any comments or questions about the agenda for tonight?
Madam Chair, I would actually like a correction to the minutes of the work session. I don't know if it's a correction in addition to the minutes of the work session of October 17, 2022.
Okay, we're on the agenda right now.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have a question on the agenda?
No.
Move, this is Jeff, move to approve the agenda.
I second.
A roll call.
Roll call Bryant?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Groneman?
Hi.
Haley?
Hi.
Mylan? Mulvaney Henry?
Hi.
That motion carries.
Okay, now we're on the work session of October 17th.
Apologies, Madam Chair.
Fine.
So I want the record to reflect in those minutes from that evening that I did ask the general manager about a flexible work policy. And that the response we got from the general manager was that it, whether the utility was working on it or not, I'm still unclear on because he said it would not be shared with the board.
Could we have those added to the minutes? Those comments?
Thank you.
This is Jeff, move to approve with amendments.
It's been moved second to the amended work session minutes of October 17th. Is there a second?
This, Rose, I second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call Bryant?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Groneman?
Hi.
Haley?
Hi.
Mylan? Mulvaney Henry?
Hi.
That motion carries.
Okay, and now for the minutes of the regular session of October 17th. Are there any corrections or additions, comments?
This is Jeff, I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call Bryant?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Groneman?
Hi.
Haley?
Hi.
Mylan? Mulvaney Henry?
Hi.
That motion carries.
Okay. Turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Ginny, is there anyone here waiting to speak? So I don't have a list. So I asked Sheila K. Jones to come up to the podium. If you can restate your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, Sheila K. Jones and Amelia Jones. I brought my granddaughter simply because I wanted her to know, as an example, I shouldn't be afraid to speak publicly. So just a little lesson. Yeah, so I have one statement. Oh, I should say, 4500 Georgia Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, 66104. That's my address, and hers is the same. I have one statement. I have two questions. My statement is, my husband and I, 40 years, have lived in this community forever, it seems. I'm from Kansas City, Kansas, and have only lived outside of here for the five years that we both were in the military in San Diego. So we lived in San Diego. I want to thank again, you know, board members Gonzalez and Bryant and Mr. Johnson and also Mr. Haley, because you greeted me as I came in. And it really is important to know that it's important to you that someone is here to speak publicly. My statement is, I wanted to come in because on last Tuesday, I actually had a transaction where I had to drop a check in the Dropbox, because that's what I was advised to do by customer service. Three years ago, my husband, he, we were notified that he had cancer. And so it's been a tough couple of three years. So I'm not just the average person. I went to Leadership 2000 in this town. I've worked in several places. I've been a manager in the nonprofit sector forever. But every once in a while, everybody needs a little bit of help. So I went to the Keeler Women's Center, and she was agreed to help me with one of my utility bills, with my BPU bill. So she trusted me and gave me a check of $445. And I came and I called customer service because I wanted to know the process. This little baby right here, she lives with me, and I don't want her to wake up one morning and all of a sudden can't get ready for school because the utilities are off. We pay our bills properly every month, not always on time, because it's been a pretty rough three years. So we, I dropped it in the box as I was instructed. I talked with the security guard, because I know a lot of faces in here, and I also know the security guard. We went to high school together, we played basketball, I learned that. So I said, I don't want to drop this in here because I don't want it to be misdirected, because I needed this to be taken care of now. I had called and got an arrangement to, not an arrangement, I should say, an extension to, for my bill to be paid on Friday of last week. So on Tuesday, prior to that, I went to get the assistance, so there would be no glitch and we wouldn't, it wouldn't be interrupted. So I tried my best, because I still know some people inside. So I made some phone calls after I dropped it in the box, because on Thursday I noticed that it hadn't changed. And so I was notified that, oh yeah, that was sent back to you in the mail. There was $445 in here from an agency that was for my bill, had my name on the bottom, because she actually handed me the check and my account number. And it came back to my house on Saturday, which there was an alarm, because I have already got an extension until Friday. So Monday morning, I'm thinking, you know, I don't want any surprises. And so I called the Keeler Center and told her what was going on. I brought her, I took her the check back on Monday. And she tried along with me to resolve the issue. She called and she was told there's a protocol. Well, agencies have to sign up for, and they have to give us their 501. And she said, I'm, I'm willing to do that, but if I could talk to somebody. You know, I also have to disclose too, I worked at BPU for seven years in customer service. And so I know, you know, that there's a process for everything. So I, you know, I did follow through, and I didn't know what else to do. My baby told me there's only a few minutes, so I better get with it. One minute, okay. Okay, she said 11, but I see one finger. So I didn't know what else to do. So I called board member Haley, and I asked him if he could, you know, do something. And so he, I sent him an email of my concern, a few, he said, name, address, a few sentences about, you know, your concern. And I think he must have forwarded to someone, because today, at 12 o'clock, I still didn't know. And I still was looking to make sure the little light was on, so that the lights wouldn't be off for her. But at 12 o'clock, I got a text that said, if you don't do the next bill by the end of the month. So I called and I listened at the balance, and I see that it'd be resolved only a couple hours before this meeting. So I had planned to come, I had planned to bring her, so I came. So it's important that you address issues and that you come forward, because that's the only way that we can, you know, know that there's other customers out there that don't know as many people as I do around here, and they may never be heard. And it's not because I know, you know, board member Haley, because he hadn't seen me for years or know my voice, but he was able to address the issue. And so I want to thank him publicly for addressing the issue and doing it promptly, because I don't want to have any surprises when I look in her face.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, could you stay here for a second, please?
I always defer to you, Mr. Johnson, but I certainly wanted to say, Madam President and members, that the grabberment and the presentation of this issue is probably not unique to Ms. Jones. The manner in which she brought it, though, I guess, is something for resolution. I'm going to want to find out, and better find out, why you don't have to rise to the level and the ability that is almost uniquely represented, and your being here today. I'm so sorry you have to come here physically to do this. As to why, A, we did not, or this utility did not accept a payment from an authorized agency for someone who was in distress. That's something I'm going to want to know, and I hope we all would too. Frankly, as I shared with Mr. Johnson, I don't care who pays the bill. If the bill is paid, we should accept it, and if there's some problem down the line to get back. But to go through all of this, let me, as a new member, and I'm glad that it's been resolved for the time being, but there are glitches and problems within this system, and this is one of them that you've outlined, that irk me. They irk me badly. It's where we are not a public utility. It's not one that serves the public. And I'm hoping to get some answers to the questions from our own customer service as to what the procedures are that prohibit, and actually have us go through the process of sending money back. And so I just wanted to say, thank you for reaching out to me. I'm sorry that you had to reach out to me or anybody else, and it shouldn't happen like that. And if my service here, for the time I'm allowed to be here, means anything before I'm done, these kind of things are not going to happen again.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That was, I guess, my two questions. It was, the first one was, why would someone have to go through that to get that resolved when there was $500 in the cashier's office that didn't happen? And the second question is Sister Bridget's question from the Keeler Center. Her question is, why is the lobby not open? Because everything else is open, and she could have just walked in and went to the cashier's window and paid. So those were my two questions. Yes, sir, and I'm sorry.
That's okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for coming. Yesterday evening, board member Haley did contact me, and I did reach out to customer service and had a series of conversations on the existing process that's in place for when agencies are not authorized within our systems, how do we go through the process to verify that they are actually and become an authorized agency? And, and then how do we better get ourselves in a situation where we can't take assistance when those assistance are coming from somebody other than the customer themselves? So those are things that I'm having conversations with, we're looking through it. We'll come up with a better process and certainly report back to the board.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. When I asked Sister Bridget, I said, has anyone ever asked you to do this process before? And she says hundreds of times, literally. She says, I've went through this process, and I've not had a problem with anyone submitting, submitting a check for anyone. She said, but I'm willing for you. Never time, I, no, I don't mind. Five o'clock again, she said. Okay, I think it's six. So she said, I never had to go through this process, but I'm willing. If I need to submit my 501, just, I need a phone call. I need to know where to send it to. And until someone calls me back, my hands are tied, I can't do it, so.
And the callback was part of the conversation I've had too. I mean, there are some things that we can obviously do to verify that, you know, things are where we want them to be, so that it'll make it easier for people to do best with the BPU, so.
So thank you so much for your due diligence and listening, and, you know, I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
So Bill, what is the process?
Yeah, that's.
Shana, you want to come up?
Good evening. So our process is when an agency, we have lots of agencies make agency, because we have an agency commitment line. We have an agency commitment email. Those agencies will contact us and let us know they're paying on an account, the amount that they're paying on account, because what we don't receive at that time is a check. So what we do is, once we just get the commitment from the agency, we put a hold on that account for 30 days. That allows the agency to send us the check, and that keeps the account from being in jeopardy. And so we just take what we call agency commitments. And so if they call that number, or they send it into agencycommitment@bpu.com, and that's normally how the agencies are communicating with us.
Janetta, this is, this is Jeff. So why would, why would we send back a check that we would receive from somebody? I mean, just curious, I don't think that this has came up in the time that I've been on board that I've heard this. But under any circumstance, I mean, as long as the check clears, I don't know why we would forego the receipt of, and send it back to them for any reason. Is there, do we have a policy about who's allowed to pay?
No, we just, if the agency makes the commitment, we will, we will take that check. We just need to know that it is an agency, we can take a commitment from that agency, and that it is an actual agency. And so those are things that we do have to make sure of, and that's why we have a process of people going through that process to let us know. Agencies are 501(c)(3) most of the time, so we don't, if we don't have that information and we just receive a check, we may not know that information. Most of the agencies we do, but when, when we get one from another agency that we aren't aware of, then we have to inquire.
I still don't understand, I understand the idea about asking for a commitment that, to put a hold on it, but, but an actual physical check or money, why wouldn't we take it and deposit it and use it to pay?
Again, as I stated.
As long as there's an account number to apply to.
But we have to verify that that's an agency, get that information. And then sometimes there are accounts that, that we require different information on. And so that would be in some cases that we would need to inquire further, or we would not accept that until we heard from the agency.
Bill, I would, I would like this to be.
I can just, I'll send some information.
Yeah.
But there would be cases where we would need to have further conversations.
Yeah, I understand. I just, I would like, and I know that we have a lot going on between now and the end of the year, but I would like a discussion on a work session regarding this, this process early next year, if possible.
Right.
Thank you, Graham.
And I would, to add to what Mr. Bryant and Ms. Mulvaney Henry have said, do we have many agencies that are coming? Because Keeler, for example, which is the one reference, I know has been around for a long time. It's been an agency functioning in Wanda County for quite some time. How often do you, are you, or is customer service confronted with a new agency or someone with whom we are not familiar, or that you're not familiar with, that you have to go through a verification process to see whether or not they're legit?
Sometimes they're churches, and we also vet those churches out. And normally, what they do is they, they call the, the line, and we get that information from them. There is very seldom that there are times when a person actually has something in hand, because agencies normally will not do that, they send it to us. So sometimes there are different circumstances in which, that it just becomes a different situation. You know, I've talked to our group, we'll have to put together a process. However, there are churches that we'll call that are not on our agency list, because that's done sometimes, but they will be directed to contact the agency commitment line. We get all the information, and then they can, because not, there's a lot of churches. So that's a lot of times what we get as well. Churches we've never heard of, bigger churches we have, but there'll be smaller churches we haven't heard of. And then we just try to make sure that we do our due diligence and making sure that we are receiving something on a customer's account. Because one of the things that we would want to understand is if we receive something and put it on a customer's account, that account holder becomes responsible. Not the agency that it came from, not the church that it came from, not the person that it came from. The person that received it and accepts it on their account, they become responsible. So if that were to come back, if there's problems with that, now it goes back to the customer, and it doesn't have anything to do with them. They don't hold an account here. They applied it to an account. If it comes back, that means that customer is going to get that back, and also there are fees on there. So we try to do our best that we make sure that we know what we're accepting, and that customers then have something on their account that they can rely on. Because we have had things that, that people have been upset because it has come back, and now their account is in jeopardy, but it was accepted. So we do our best on that to make sure that we're receiving something that, you know, we have vetted out, made sure if we haven't ever dealt with that agency. Now, this agency, now we've heard from them, they've gone through the process, and that, that's that one time.
So they're mostly through the lead project, I would imagine?
Well, no, we have like Catholic charities and MLN, and just trying to think of some of the other names that we get, but we get those checks all the time. United Way, all of them have been through our process and have, they're on there. So if we get ones that are different, we normally try to have that conversation with them.
Janetta, this is Jeff. So, so would, would that process apply also? Let's say I wrote a check for the amount for Mrs. Jones. So, so the check she's bringing to the BPU to apply to her account is not one with her name. Would that check be accepted?
And that's what we have talked about before, how somebody can just kind of, you know, apply something, give a gift. We've had people call, as long as they have the information, and we don't have to provide it, because we can't provide account information. We've told them, as long as you have the name or the address and you write it in there, we can apply. We can apply a check to an account. If that account is going to be accepted, it's better if the person knows, because we've had people call sometimes and say, I didn't make this payment. So we do get those, those calls, and some people don't want, because they're not sure who made it or if it's a good payment or not. So we've kind of gone through the years where we've just kind of basically said, if somebody wants to do that, it's kind of good if they know that they're receiving something, because when they call in, most of the time they think it's misapplied. But we will, we will do that as far as accepting something.
Bill, I'd really like to dive deeper into this early next year.
Let me, let me hear from Rose first, and I'll respond to you, Jeff.
Thanks. So Mrs. Jones gave us, you know, an account from Sister Bridget, that Sister Bridget, is that right? Okay. That Sister Bridget has come in before, to the extent the lobby were open, she would able to be, she would be able to come in and actually physically give that check to a cashier, make that payment on site under the same circumstance. I mean, is that, Sister Bridget's, I mean, clearly she's done that before, because she, I mean, she's, she said that she has. So would that be possible?
If someone could come in?
If Sister, if, in this case, because it's also an agency, if Sister Bridget could come in and do that versus, so would she have to go through the same process if she were allowed to physically come in and hand the check to the cashier?
We would have known it was an agency. We would need to have known it was an agency, and that agency was working with us. And then we, we would have gone ahead and went through that process. Had we already talked to her, and we confirmed the information, it would have also been a possibility to do that at that time.
Okay. And is, are the agency commitment line and email, are they available on our website? Because I just did a quick search, I can't find them, but that doesn't mean they're not there.
I, I would say yes, but I, I can't say that for sure at this time, I haven't looked it up, but I can't.
Okay.
And if it's not, then I will make sure that it gets on there. It's normally under the residential information, customer information, but I will definitely look and make sure.
Thank you.
So Jeff, I did ask the same question that you asked. So if I was, if I was the one paying for somebody else's account, does that process work too? So we'll, we'll certainly put on a presentation to the board during a work session, talk about current process as it is today. I would, I would think that there'd be some modification in the current process, and we'll be able to bring that back to the board as we work through, through that, so.
Bill, this is Jeff. I also think that we need to have further discussion about the status of the lobby.
So. Good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rob, is there anybody waiting online?
Yes, there is.
Mr. Gorman, if you can state your name and, and address for the record, please.
This is Ty Gorman, 28.
Yeah, five minutes, five minutes to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Ty Gorman, 2843 Parkwood Boulevard, 66104, ACK. I wanted to talk about a few things today. I'll try to fit it all in five minutes. So one is that we worked with a number of customers under KIRA who were getting shut off despite having, trying to go through that process. Now that KIRA has ended, there's a number of other programs and, and gaps in the funding from between the federal, state, and BPU that is going to have a lot of issues getting people paid. And what, what I and my neighbors want is no BPU shut offs that put customers at any health risk this winter. If, you know, there shouldn't be any shut offs while the weather's cold through March. And the federal money is there to fill those gaps and retroactively. So nobody should be put at that kind of risk. My neighbors and I also want separation of the electric and water charges and from these unrelated fees and fixed costs, so that when people can't pay bills that are $200 to $500 for a whole mess of things, and then they get their water shut off, that's not how that should be set up. It should be these separated charges and not attached to something that people need for their health and their well-being. And then, third thing that we would like is meetings with, community meetings outside of this, getting into the BPU office and for the board meeting with our Northeast Case CK Neighborhood Association around opportunities for bill reduction from the federal bills, from the federal opportunities that exist now through the IRA and the IIJA. This is billions of dollars of, that are available for community access and competitive grants that BPU could be taking advantage of, the federal government's able and trying to pay for 50% upfront of the costs of transitioning to clean energy and having electric bills from the coal plant, that's the most expensive source of energy we have here in Kansas. The clean energy grants are for 50%, and then with 0% financing and other federal opportunities, it's even greater opportunity than that. So there's a need for BPU to be transparent with the community and the city council, and in discussions with their customers around how we're going to take advantage of that money coming in to reduce all of our bills that are way too high, highest in the state. And, and so we want to meet with David Haley. And um, and so we want to meet with uh, David Haley uh, is in the Northeast KCK side as soon as possible. We've talked with some other folks, um, Rose Mulvaney. And we hope to, hope to see you uh, within the next uh, month uh, at a community meeting and we want to invite uh, you to reach out uh, to me directly. And I know I've reached out to both of you, so uh, we will set up a community meeting here. Want to also mention that there are, last time we spoke to uh, General Johnson, General Manager and, and his team. Uh, we presented a number of customer protections on, on health and prohibitions on cutoffs uh, from other states. And uh, we have quite a bit of that research that we've mailed to you guys as well.
You have one minute.
Year and a half from states such as New Mexico, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Michigan, whose protections for shut offs have far and transparency have far outstripped BPU's protections uh, in municipal utilities. And so uh, we've, we've heard a few times that uh, you know, people got to pay their bills and there's no way around it. And uh, that, you know, BPU is the best uh, in the, in the region for their customers. And we have the, the research to back up that that isn't yet the case. Uh, when you're passing that uh, cold improved cold weather rule today, we really hope to uh, to start thinking about how even uh, even the KCC's uh, rule that we might be adopting here shuts people off within forty-eight hours. And if these gaps exist that you've talked about so far around bill payment, uh, that's putting people in danger regardless of the improvement. So uh, thank you so much for your time. Uh, hope to be
At us time.
Within the next month.
Uh, Mr. Gorman, this is Rose Mulvaney Henry. And I just, I wanted to make sure that you received my email um, to you on October twenty-fifth.
Me, Stu Henry. Yes, I do appreciate, I appreciate your email and your responsiveness and uh, do um, uh, look forward to meeting with you with more community members so we can have more of a dialogue around it. Uh, but yes, do appreciate your uh, your email and your responsiveness. In particular, would love to have the same from other folks in the board and, and in the uh, in the manager's office.
Thank you.
Mr. Gorman, this is Jeff Bryant. So a couple points of clarification. Number one, the uh, cold weather policy has already been adopted, revised and adopted. So the wording is more uh, appropriate for the residents of our community. Number two would be uh, the BPU does not have the highest rates in Kansas. Uh, in fact, ours are some of the most competitive. Now, bills may be larger because you're also incorporating city costs and utility costs all into one bill instead of people receiving them as separate bills. And number three is coal is not the costliest energy source by far. Matter of fact, it uh, it was uh, running pretty much neck and neck with natural gas until natural gas crested above four dollars and now coal is one of our least expensive energy sources.
Let's see, can you still hear me? What happened here? Maybe I'll need to grab my phone and dial in. This thing froze.
Be disconnected during a inclement or overly inclement errors. We're not quite there yet as a utility and the affordability, even with the funds coming, the federal funds that are available. I for one have really pushed on this board in my brief time here that we at least send a resolution to the UG, to the unified government that we do bifurcate uh, what are actual consumption uh, of electric and water charges that are forwarded and bifurcate the UG charges. Uh, it is something that I've had a, a discussion with a couple of commissioners about UG commissioners as well, along with the pilot. I would hope this board, um, the BPU board would at least send that resolution toothless in its ability to implement that it might be before the UG. Because I think it would make a huge difference when people are not being disconnected for the additional taxes uh, that they're not paying as opposed to the electric and water uh, that they have used and that they can pay for. So thank you again for your call.
Thank you. And um, just to quickly respond to, to Jeff Bryant, first appreciate David Haley's uh, comments there. That's correct. Um, I, I'm happy to share the research around levelized cost of energy being fifty percent of coal for most other clean energy sources, including solar and storage. And the seventy-five percent of utilities have a, it's cheaper to replace coal with solar and storage than it is to keep running the coal plant as is. And uh, nuclear is the only source of energy that is levelized. Cost of energy is more expensive than coal at this point. Um, also thank you for uh, the, the point on the cold weather rule. The case, it doesn't go, yeah, I meant, should have said go into effect instead of passed. Um, but uh, even as is, uh, it can put folks in danger and there should be more protections uh, to shut, to shut offs, especially in cold weather. So thank you.
Anything else from the board? Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Rob, is there anyone else?
Yes, sir. It's a phone number. I don't have a name. Number ending in three one zero. We'll have to hit star six to unmute. Their ability to speak has been enabled. I think they've not muted their own line.
I, I cannot hear you, Rob.
Their ability to speak has been enabled, but they have not muted. I can't unmute them.
Can you give them one more opportunity? Uh, can you ask them? Try to assist them, uh, at least one more time.
If you are the phone number ending in three one zero, please hit star six to unmute your line. I can't force the enemy from here.
Okay, alright.
There are other answers.
Okay. So caller ninety-three ten, thank you for uh, attempting to unmute and speak to us. We're going to go ahead and move on. And then if we can certainly welcome to try again uh, later and we can try to get you connected, so. Next on the agenda is uh, Laurie, I'll ask you to come up for uh, third quarter twenty twenty financials.
Good evening. So we'll uh, be going over the results for the third quarter. First slide here is looking at our build uh, KWH on the electric side. So all of our customer classes are up over our twenty uh, twenty-one levels by about six point seven percent. Uh, residential is up slightly about two percent while commercials up five percent. And then our industrial continues um, to grow above our twenty-one levels is up seventeen percent. Next slide looks at our water um, usage and overall um, we're up three point six percent. We are seeing residential down slightly uh, just under one percent. And commercials up six percent as well as industrials up eight percent, so. Our revenues for the third quarter. Um, overall, uh, we're up twenty-three, almost twenty-four percent over twenty twenty-one uh, levels of third quarter. From a budget perspective, we're uh, up about twenty-four percent, which is represents about twenty-two point six million. Our electric is, is up over budget by twenty-one point seven million while water is up about eight hundred thousand. So electric is up twenty-seven percent while water is up six percent. We'll say our ERC, uh, one of the reasons for the variance, large variance on the electric side is our ERC budget is set at three cents per uh, KWH. And uh, the third quarter was running about four point four nine cents, almost four point five cents. Revenues from a year-to-date perspective, uh, we're up about ten percent over twenty twenty-one levels. Uh, we're up about thirteen and a half percent uh, over our budget. Thirty-three point one of that is, one million is uh, on the electric side, an increase there and water's about eight hundred thousand overall. Some of the variances there, um, uh, electric being up sixteen percent while residential is up six million. Our commercial is up thirteen point one and industrial is up thirteen and a half. Uh, we are seeing our wholesale sales up about eight and a half million as well. Um, overall, uh, you know, ERC kind of be the theme in, in this uh, presentation. So uh, three quarters through three quarters, um, we've been averaging about three point eight nine cents uh, and our budget's at three, so. Our operating expenses looking at the third quarter, uh, we're up about forty percent over twenty twenty-one levels. Over about thirty-one percent uh, over budget with on uh, the electric side being nine point nine million above. Um, and then uh, water was down about four hundred thousand. So electric is up about thirty-eight percent while water is down about four percent. Just to give you a sense for the third quarter, um, our fuel and purchase power. So we had a budget of twenty million uh, between those two and our actual was forty-one million just for the quarter. The remaining operating expenses uh, were down about a million dollars uh, in comparison. And then from a year-to-date perspective, um, we're twenty-one, we're about eighteen percent, about thirty-two point nine million above uh, twenty-one levels, uh, about fifteen percent, almost sixteen percent above budget. Thirty-one million of that on the electric side and one point eight million down on the water side. Um, our budget, just looking at fuel and purchase power, if you look at the, the pie chart there is about fifty-two percent of our expenses through the, through year-to-date, um, our budget on fuel and purchase power was about fifty-eight million dollar budget and our actual was about ninety-four million. So all of our other areas were down about seven million under budget.
So Laurie, is it safe to say that between the fuel and purchase power, the, the biggest bump is coming from the increases in natural gas prices?
And I would, I'll probably
I know, you may have to defer to Andrew, which
He's the one that studies that a lot, but uh,
Yeah, I'm just, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, I'm just curious. I know that, I know that coal costs are relatively stable.
So, so coal is a fuel source, is relatively stable. Um, we have fixed rate pricing on coal. All of our renewable contracts are, are fixed rate pricing. And so the big driver is natural gas pricing. And if you recall the fuel and purchase power budget thing we did about a month ago, when you compare it against the EIA forecasted number from last year, we were above that ninety-five percent threshold for the vast majority of this year. And so natural gas always is the predominant driver in market pricing. And that continues to be the case this year. And therefore, market pricing within the SPP market is driven predominantly by, by natural gas prices. And therefore, our market prices that we're paying for fuel or for energy for our customers is well higher than we budgeted coming into last year. Again, we use third-party sources like EIA and other sources to try to forecast those. But as you can tell from these numbers, we were well below where we should have been based off of actuals now, so.
Thank you, Andrew. I just want to make sure that it's clear that, that we have a a portfolio of energy sources and there's a reason why we don't wholeheartedly just go for solar or wind or one specific source because of the volatility of the marketplace.
So a- as we talk about fuel sources and generation sources, in, in a lot of ways, each fuel source or fuel type has its own pros and cons. And, and you could, we as a utility have requirements beyond just the energy itself. We require twenty-four by seven, three sixty-five service. And therefore renewables do not necessarily meet those agendas today. And there's not enough batteries on the planet today to meet all of those requirements. And so what we've done, I think particularly well, is we have a very diverse, broad generation source from our renewables of predominantly wind because we are in Kansas. That's the predominant fuel source. Uh, but we are very diverse even on the, the fuel mix side in terms of our coal and natural gas. And as the caller did mention, the IRA does present more opportunities over the next decade and it's a decade long. So we will explore those opportunities. And I do think solar will become a more predominant fuel source over the next decade as we're able to go out and get higher levels of investment tax credit off of the new IRA bill. Um, but again, that's a long process. But I do think we will continue to, to revamp our portfolio going forward that is likely more renewable in nature. But again, I think we want to maintain a really diverse portfolio. Because again, just like this is two years ago, everybody would have told you, you should be on all natural gas. If you're carrying a coal plant, you're a fool. And then today, those people that are ninety-five plus natural gas have very expensive utility bills today because of that natural gas bill. So you, you never know what the future hurt holds, but a diverse portfolio allows you to be a little more flexible on how, how that stuff occurs, so.
So Andrew, in a nutshell, there's pricing and reliability.
There is. And, and so that is the big piece that, again, the, the general public and, and different even organizations aren't required to both have the capacity as well as the energy. But as being a member of SPP, you have to both have capacity and the energy itself. And so a wind resource, for example, if we own two hundred and fifty megawatts of, of wind, that capacity that we get accounted SPP only is about thirteen percent. Where it, when I look at a coal plant, for example, we have two hundred and fifty megawatts of coal. I get to count two hundred and fifty megawatts of capacity off that coal plant. So to reach my goal off of wind, even though SPP does not allow this, is you would have to have several thousand megawatts of wind to meet your capacity requirements with SPP. Um, and so again, because those resources don't produce twenty-four by seven and on-demand. And so therefore, that's why we believe that a diverse portfolio of both fuel sources as well as renewable sources are best able to meet the requirements of providing that twenty-four by seven service that we all require at this point.
Thank you.
Okay. There we go. Alright, this is just looking at our operating expenses, uh, taking um, depreciation, depreciation out of the mix. So um, our overall, um, we're up about eighteen percent over budget. Purchase power is up about sixteen point seven million while fuel is up about eighteen point nine. The other areas are down below their budget, uh, productions down a little bit, about four hundred thousand while TND is down about four point four. And GNA is down about two point seven. On the water side, all their uh, operating expenses are down below uh, budget. Nine hundred thousand on production, a hundred and ten on TND and about six hundred and eighty on GNA. So our change in net position for the third quarter, um, we projected to be at a positive seven, seventeen point four million. Uh, we're at a nineteen point four million on the electric side. Our projection was fourteen point four and we're at fifteen point two. And on the water, we projected around the three million positive and we're at a four point three positive. From a year-to-date perspective, our budget is about a positive twenty-four point eight, while our actuals are about twenty-seven and a half. Our budget for the electric side was nineteen point nine million and we're at nineteen point eight actual and water is four point nine positive, while they're positive seven point seven actual. And then here's just a look through September of our revenue versus expenses for the last ten years. And then our water as well. The next slide looks at our average daily collections. And as you can see in the month of September, on average, you know, we're averaging about almost two point one million a day in collections. That's up considerably from our previous two years and also up really basically over all of twenty-twenty-one. Next slide looks at our historical monthly cash. So we did have a drop in cash of about almost six million dollars. I'll talk a little bit more in detail here on that as well. And as we finish out the year, typically, September is always our good month to bring forward to you, but it has been a challenge there. So the next three months are typically not too positive in a cash perspective. So with December definitely not being one of those, so. We'll follow the next three months and hopefully you won't see too much of a negative impact on cash. We are seeing, just just finished October, we are showing a little bit over two million positive in cash, so. And here's our cash position. So we are, we are at fifty-eight days. A year ago, we were at seventy-nine, while last month we are at seventy, so we did have a drop of twelve days. I did update our days of cash. One day typically had been about six hundred and so thousand, so now it's about seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Our rolling twelve-month average of expenses and that's the, you know, what we divide our our cash position, our cash from. We're about thirty-eight point eight million higher than we were in twenty-twenty-one on that twelve-month period, so. I did add a couple of slides here to talk about the ERC a little bit more. This graph gives us the first, second, and third quarter of twenty-twenty-two. The gray portion of the graph, of the bar graph, is the required collection that is needed in order to meet our our expenses basically for the month. So this is trued up, you know, after the quarters are over. So in, just example, first quarter there, we were projecting about twenty-three million of expenses in our ERC based on what we charged, we collected about eighteen point three million. So in that first quarter, we set an ERC at three and a half cents per KWH. And that's the orange color line that goes across. And that blue line is probably what we should have set it in order to meet our expenses, and that's at four point three five cents. So as you get into the third quarter, that's where our numbers really start to trend upward quite a bit. So we did, and let me go back here first. So we did have in the first quarter a four point seven million under collection in the first quarter. That four point seven was included in the third quarter. We have a six point three million dollar under collection in the second quarter. And that under collection has been put in the fourth quarter. So we just started our fourth quarter or October, it was the first of that. So we haven't collected too much of that that quarter so far. So in the third quarter, we projected our expenses to be about thirty-eight and a half million. Can you go back, Rob, sorry, thirty-eight and a half million while our ERC rate that we established brought in about twenty-nine point eight million. So we set our ERC rate at four point four nine, almost four and a half cents. We, to meet our expenses, we should have been about five point one two cents. So, you know, one thing that we look at every quarter when we're looking at what to set our ERC, you know, is try not to be too volatile with it. You know, our commercial, large commercial industrial don't like volatility in the ERC and none of us do. But those those entities probably contact us the most when there is a volatility. But so we try to minimize what that increase is. You know, and sometimes, you know, just to be, we try to be conservative with it. So, you know, our projection may be a little bit higher, but then we may back off, you know, in the hopes that, you know, maybe some gas prices start coming down or whatever. So we try to be optimistic about it, but, you know, things have just kept going up a little bit more. So the fourth quarter ERC is set at four point five nine cents. So it's up a little bit from our third quarter ERC. The next slide.
So Lori, okay. So that, or I'll go back to the very, the variation there is basically tied back to what Andrew said earlier. Variation there is basically tied back to what Andrew was saying earlier. You know, we do these forecasts a year in advance, we reconcile every quarter. And then if we need to change the next quarter, we'll do that, that time. I don't think anybody's, and I think he said it, Jeff said it earlier, forecasted gas prices to be as high and the market to be as high as it is, so. And it's, it's, it's not easy catching that quarter by quarter, because what Lori just said, if we, you know, we don't want to overshoot it and have to turn around and start paying back. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a moving target. And we did take a little bit of a conservative approach to guessing that it would be here. We would raise the rates and these are rates that we're raising or riders that we're raising as we kind of stair-step our way through this year. But the market is very volatile and and I think we're catching up. I think the mar- market will correct itself at some point and I think we'll be in better shape. But but this is not lost revenue, it's just revenue that didn't come in, revenue that still will, still will come in. It's just more of a timing issue between where the market is each quarter and where we're setting our rate, anticipating that there'd be some settling of the market, but that settling don't seem to be working out in our favor.
The next slide is one to give you a historical look at what our ERC rates have been over last three, three-plus years. So, and even prior to twenty-nineteen and twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, our ERC was sitting around three to three point two. It was pretty stable, you know, and then, you know, the February event came in twenty-twenty-one. And that reason that dropped so low is that we've made such a surplus or whatever that we were giving it back, right? And it seems like then things just went chaotic after that. So, you know, and as you see, it's just, has kept going up. So, I mean, I just wanted to kind of show what the the ups and downs have been more in the more recent. And as we were talking, in twenty-twenty-one, we had pretty much an under-over collection in every quarter. You know, so we were, we were given, you know, that money back. And then a year later, you know, you have such a large under collection. So we've been through quite a bit of volatile time here. Next slide just looks at our historical cash over time. This is definitely the the biggest drop we've had in in quite a while. And then this one is just represent, next slide just represents kind of our days' cash red line there with the impact of the change in the cash. And the the next slide is our balance sheet, just some items there. So our fuel inventory is about six, almost seven million. Recently, we currently have about fifty days of coal on hand. We still have our bond dollars for the twenty-sixteen C. As soon as those transformers come in someday, we're going to use that money for that. And then we still have a little bit of our twenty-twenty-eight bonds, about eight hundred thousand remaining. On our capital spending side, we have a budget about fifty-six million. We spent about almost twenty-five million of that with electric spending, a little over fifteen million and water about six, six million and common about two point seven million. So some of the projects working on is Piper, we're head feeders and that's for out, out west there for a lot of work for urban outfitters. The Fisher Underground Feeders, about two point two million of that is down in the Rosedale area. We have our annual underground of just various projects throughout the community. On the water side, the water leaks and valves and system improvements, about a million and a half, while the transmission improvements about one point seven. And then Waters doing work alongside with the UG on their projects, about four hundred and six thousand. Looking at our debt coverage, next slide. So our debt coverage for September with pilot, we're at a combined rate of two point three four, two point two three on the electric side and one point eight three on the water side. Without pilot, we're about one point six five combined, one point five five electric and one point three seven on the water side. With that, I'll take any questions.
Hey Lori, I've got a question for you. Can you go back a slide, please, Rob? So the capital spending for twenty-twenty-two was budgeted at roughly eighty million. Is that, am I reading that right?
The the budget for twenty-twenty-two is fifty-six million.
Budget was fifty-six million.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
That column there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And and, okay, and so year-to-date, we have spent.
Twenty-five, almost twenty-five million.
That's what I thought. Okay, and and this is through three quarters?
Yes.
Okay, and do we expect to expand the rest of that for the la- the final quarter?
I would say, I mean, we looked at it through the end of October. Can't remember the overall dollar, but it went down about fifty-two percent remaining. So now December, you know, we do have a lot of activity in December, things getting processed and and all. I would say that we will not spend a hundred percent of that budget. There are some things in there, you know, that were, I'd say on the water side, KDHE-related, you know, that they didn't start up knowing what their cost increases that they had, they were working on specific projects. And now, you know, now that we're able to move forward with the increase in that KDHE loan. So some of their projects had budget in there that, you know, they kind of had to delay a little bit. There are some supply chain issues. I mean, transformers are in the capital budget too, that we haven't been able to spend.
Well, I guess based on some of those things you mentioned, can can we get an estimate of what we think we'll spend through the December thirty-first of the remaining budget? I understand it'll be a guess, but.
Yeah, and I can work, I can work with the operation groups and get an idea of what projects, you know, they know that they aren't going to get to at all and kind of a reason.
Okay.
Reason why.
Thank you.
And Lori, so, so on the project, on the dollars, since we're on this slide, so the dollars that are left to spend, if I'm not mistaken, the previous slide about what's left on bond is like one point seven and eight, so one point five million left of bond dollars. So everything beyond that is cash.
So there's a little bit of KDHE money.
Okay, for the water side.
Water side.
Okay, but but the the vast majority of what's left would have to be cash.
Yes.
Payments.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so that that at least helps me. I know that in the situation that we're in with the rising costs, which I was looking at the ERC changes and it's about thirty-seven percent since where we were, you know, have been, which I can tell you that what I have seen from costs that I've passed along to our customers at that company I work at, it's been about thirty-five percent since beginning of twenty-twenty-one. So, yeah, I mean, I'd like to see everything get done and I also like to see us not spend all the cash in volatile times like this. Thank you.
And Jeff, I was going to ask Lori, what would it take to, I don't want to ask you to do, I just want to ask the question, what would it take? With the remaining fifty-six percent, based on your ability to forecast what those dollars are, what those projects are? And let's see, say we just kind of maintain our cash position where we are, maybe you said two million dollars. There'd be a slight uptick, but if we can carry it after the end of the year, where will we be at with our days of cash on hand if we were to spend this much money? I mean, I think that would be an interesting thing too, to see how much cash this would occupy it and then hop forward down, that would pull our our reserves to be able to.
And I would say until we, you know, if we're able to get, you know, the six million under collection in the fourth quarter, we still, that eight million is still not going to come until the first quarter.
Right, and it's a, it's a guessing game, I know, but I mean, you know, the, yes, and I was going to go where where Jeff went, the remaining budget that's unspent, there's majority of that is cash. And and some of the supply chain that you talked about, some of it is, I mean, can we afford to really spend and complete this, these projects? And we're in cost of service, trying to figure out what our next steps are of next year and beyond. And hopefully, we'll have some better answers when we complete the cost of service and hopefully we can get into a better, stronger financial position, once we present that back to the board. The other thing that I would say is I'm wanting to come up with a way of better managing our our fuel and purchase power expenses through this cost of service, so that that don't become such a a drag on our cash reserves. I don't have anything to say and I don't want to get too far, far down the road with this discussion, because we still have a lot of work to do. But I do, do want to look at it, take a little bit slightly different approach to see if we can manage that without having to draw down so much cash during these uncertain times that we're in, you know, going into the future.
This is Jeff. So the one thing that, you know, looking at that and 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 I, I am not a proponent of, you know, leaving capital projects uncompleted, because I know that that's the maintenance on our system that keeps our system up to date. But I also think that there's a real risk that our ERC collection for the fourth quarter will also be under what we need. So that's also going to put a drain upon our days' cash on hand. So it's, I mean, this is a, this is a odd time that we live in right now with everything that's happening with the direction of costs and stuff. So I would be interested though in hearing what, what, if we were to even do spend, you know, half or two-thirds of the money that's left and be able to complete it, what would that, what would the impact on days' cash on hand? If the ERC collection is accurate and and all this needed for the rest of the year, just what, what's that going to do to our days' cash on hand to try to expend another, you know, twenty million dollars or eighteen, twenty million dollars? Thank you.
So a day is seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand per day, right? Yeah, so, you know, the. Right, I know, I know, I don't, not knowing, not knowing what's coming in, but that's kind of where our average is today, so.
Yep. With looking at the last twelve months.
Twelve-month rolling average, right, yes, yes. We'll, we'll try to come back with something, so.
So Lori, when, when the days of cash on hand used to be between five hundred and five hundred and fifty, six hundred thousand, whatever, when it was lower, was it not based on the twelve-month rolling average?
No, it was always based on twelve months. We just weren't having these high fuel and purchase power costs during that twelve-month period.
Got it.
So when we were looking back through twenty-one, those were not impacting us as much. So now that we're into twelve months, almost ten twelfths of twenty-two, then.
Can you go back to that period? Can you go back to that period where you see the fuel and purchase power was leveled off doing, go back, Rob?
Oh, you mean?
Where you had your graph on the ERC?
Yeah, right there.
Go back again.
Oh, the, the ERC rate?
Well, yeah, I think there was, there was a
That one?
There, there. So I mean, these rates are kind of, I guess indicative of where the prices were at the time or things were more, at least more stable going nineteen, twenty.
I mean, we might've had an under collection a little bit or, you know, nothing to the extreme of what we've, what we've had.
Right.
You know, it might've been a couple million.
Right.
One way or the other, whatever.
And twenty-one, Andrew was the polar vortex.
That, the quarter two, twenty.
Right, right. So that's where we were in the opposite position that we are now. Market prices fail. So
The, the February of twenty twenty-one was due to natural gas prices skyrocketing. And therefore, at that point in time, our load, our customer consumption was below where our generation level was. And so therefore, we sold so much wholesale power during that time.
Right.
Because our customers didn't consume so much. So we sold it at a thousand plus dollars a megawatt hour. Even though we were buying it at a thousand dollars per megawatt hour, we were selling more than we were buying and therefore it netted proceeds of, you know, plus fifteen million over that, that ten day stretch. And so it was worked out. Again, it was the, it was the value of having that diverse portfolio. And because natural gas at the time was very expensive and therefore you, you couldn't net any, any funds, right? Where, where coal and even the wind resources and all the other resources netted positive value because we had fixed rate pricing on those items. So
And I'm, I misspoke. So thank you.
But, and, and again, generally speaking, our diverse portfolio should work really well in higher natural gas pricing environments. So although planning and me in specific has failed to keep up with the rate of natural gas and the rate of market pricing, I do think that the next couple of quarters will be beneficial on a BPU basis. And so I, I think that line, although it looks really steep today, will start to flatten as we move into twenty twenty-three and hopefully turn back towards, even, even though I expect natural gas prices to be elevated compared to where we historically stood in the two to four dollar natural gas price range, I think it probably isn't going back to that range anytime soon. I do think our diverse portfolio will help bring that back to a more three, three and a half type level ERC that we historically have seen.
So if I could ask for approval on the third quarter?
This is Jeff. I moved to approve the third quarter financials.
Second. Send it in second and roll call, please.
Roll call, Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Andrew. Next up, I'll ask Marisa come up. I think the board know we've been working on a risk management plan. He's going to give you kind of an overview of where we are. Certainly a policy statement that's been sent to you for your review and we'll circle back when you, when you guys are ready to move forward with that. Go ahead, Marisa.
Evening. My name is Marisa Moss, Executive Director of Corporate Compliance, and I'm here to talk about the enterprise risk management policy and plan. So like always, I like to start with a quick overview. Well, I'm going to talk, talk about tonight and discuss, we're going to talk about board risk responsibility.
It's not the right slide.
Not the right slide. It's not the, it's not the right back. So I'll go ahead and just keep talking until he gets up there. As you recall, this summer I came before you guys and we talked about risk management. We was rolling out that plan and what that looks like. When we discuss, I'll be back and talk about board policy that would need to be adopted. Well, we already started with that plan. The board policy would have to be a little bit later date and I was going to come back before you guys and that's why I'm here today. And so we've already started down that plan and that process of going through that process. And so we've started identifying, that's one, the, one of the steps that we're going to take through the strategic plan. We'll go through that differentiation process. What does that mean? The departments go work with their staff and identify the areas that are high risk, right? It's like go through that process with their staff, identify those areas and come back. And they had a form to fill out. That form basically was probably about four pages and talked about the impact, dollar amounts, what's the causes that lead to that risk? What's some of the current corrective actions or correct, corrective measures we have in place to hopefully deter that risk? And so we got all the information. I put that information together and kind of, which was interesting, just start going through it. There was a lot of risk I was identified that was across the, in the, across the utility that was similar. You know, it's what was identified in probably operation, electric operations was the same risk I was identifying in water operations. There is some type, type of metrics that we were looking at. And so that allowed us to actually lower the risk a little bit more, that list that we have for the register, lower it a little bit more to probably about forty, thirty-five, forty. And so in the next couple of weeks, we'll be meeting with the executive team and going through that process of then part, prioritization. So we have this risk, we know the level of the risk and we need to prioritize which ones that number one, we can actually identify and put some boundaries around it, right? Can we do something with that risk? Inherently being a utility comes with risk, right? We just went through finance. There's, there's certain things that come with being a utility. And there's some risks that we won't be able to actually manage, but then there's some risk we won't prioritize through funding of projects, stuff like that, that we can actually manage that risk. So that's what my presentation was tonight and it's a, I felt that'd be long enough. Okay. So I'll, I'll go ahead and continue with the presentation. We'll catch up on the slides. So tonight I'm going to talk to you about the risk man, management plan update, that plan I was just talking about, update you on the process. The board risk responsibilities, what's your risk responsibilities as a board when it comes to the actual board policy? The overview of the risk management policy. Now I'll talk about the policy, there's three sections to the policy and I'll go over that. The internal risk management governance. So there's a governance that we have created inside the utility that I would discuss. And where does that fall into corporate compliance and how we're basically staffing up and how we're addressing that? Then we'll go to next steps and questions. So we'll go ahead and move to the next one here. You will follow along with me. So what's the need for risk management? So one of the things for a risk management policy or plan is regulatory requirements. We have a number of regulatory requirements at the utility. We have water requirements, we have nerd, we have environmental, we have disaster planning, we also have insurance provider. All those have a, a piece of risk management that's involved in them. Some of them actually have a risk management process we have to go through. Another thing driving this is the SPP energy market. To be a market participant at SPP, we have to have an energy risk management plan. That's about just number one, not get so far in the market that we lose our shirt, right? And so we have to have a risk management plan. That risk management plan has to be something adopted by the GM. Another one is Department of Justice. As you can tell, probably about four years ago, PG&E with the wildfires, everything else and vegetation management. There was actually a criminal function of that. And the Department of Justice has sensing guidelines that give credit for robust compliance and risk management programs. It looks at that when it looks at a company and says, did you have something in place to catch number one, the risk, but also catch that you weren't in compliance with something? So both of those functions work together. Department of Justice have a ton of just guidance out there for corporations in general dealing with this. And the last one is just preparation for uncertain events. Events happens. We're just talking about now, gas prices are high. There's events happen. How can we prepare ourselves as a utility to be a better place when those events occur? And so that's really one of the benefits as you see for a risk management plan, that the risk is not borne by our customers to rates. It's positioning ourselves and having an impact on that risk, hopefully in the positive, that the actual impact to our customers is very minimal. And that's what we want to be to that plan. And sometimes maybe it's off the shelf insurance and we're reducing that risk. So regarding your responsibilities as a board, your responsibilities as a board in general are not involved in the day-to-day risk management process. However, you do have a oversight role. The oversight role is to satisfy yourself that the risk man, management policy design implemented by the utility and the senior executives are consistent with the strategy and objectives of the utility. And so, next slide. Me too. And so the board director should be aware of significant risk and require the GM to engage in those risks as needed. And that's your responsibility to make sure the policy is enough and robust enough to make sure we're doing our job and then reporting those significant risks right back to you and letting you know what we're doing to make sure we're mitigating those risks. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me anytime.
Excellent. I kind of have one.
Yes.
Go back to the GM's responsibility, but then DOJ, I kind of lost you at that, but Department of Justice.
Next.
I mean, I, I didn't, where did those overlap or where does one supersede the other in terms of identifying and implementing that? I mean, I mean, it was a brief
Okay.
point, but it, it doesn't really go to the core of what you're saying, but I just, where do they come into play? How does the fit come into play?
So the DOJ piece is just a guidance. It's a guidance for company. It's a how they should have a robust, actual program for risk management and for corporate compliance. It's just a guidance for companies and that's it. That guidance now talks about what's the board's role, what's the GM role? So if you're going to have a risk management process and a risk management program, it can't be stored all the way down in the bottom of the basement. It has to have some upward influence, if that makes sense. It has to have the buy-in, it has to have the buy-in, the board has to have the buy-in of the GM, right? And so what they notice is when there was something wrong with the corporate environment, that the risk management, the corporate compliance person was all the way down the basement. And there was no influence up. So there has to be buy-in from the board and it has to be buy-in from the GM. And that's just a guidance from, just from the Department of Justice. And so when they start investigating, that's one of the first things they look at. Do you have a culture that allows whistleblowing, allows that to come up, right? So
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smalls. It is. It does. Thank you.
So what does a risk management policy cover? It defines the risk, how the risk is managed and how risk management will be implemented at BPU. Next page. It's a little bit easier. I have slides. And so what is risk? Risk is an uncertain event, that event that occurs, right? Whenever it occurs, we're predicting it could be a good thing, could be a bad thing, but is that probability and the impact of it? That's what's risk, probability, impact or severity of it. And that's what we look at when we look at risk. The management of the risk is a fundamental responsibility of GM and the leadership team. So it's a, it's a full executive department that we're responsible for the management of that risk. The GM can designate someone to make sure we're managing that and bringing reports and make sure we're notifying and working with different departments. And right now, the GM has appointed me to do that for the corporate compliance and the risk management standpoint. Next page. So our risk management plan uses a utility wide approach. It uses the approach from the standpoint of enterprise across the utility. So we're not necessarily looking at the small things, like once a small thing, stuff that's maybe small to medium size to a department, but the whole risk as, as to the utility is very small. So we're looking at the utility wide stuff to make sure, number one, that's the stuff that's going to impact the ability for us to hit our objectives and our strategic plan. The next one is for it to be embedded in the management system and the processes. So when we go through, we identify and go through that process, some of the risk management mitigation come out is going to be embedded in the processes. It might be a different way we look at financials, might be a different way we get approvals for certain purchases and stuff like that. Look at contract language, make sure we have sufficient insurance for our contracts or stuff like that. So some of those processes could change based on that risk and say, hey, this is a risk. Can we create a process that eliminates that risk? And that's the hope. It's not something we have to go spend money, it's just a process internal we can change. And finally, we follow a formal enterprise risk management framework. There's a couple of them out there. We follow ISO three, uh, thirty-one hundred, thirty-one thousand. And so that's the framework we follow. And so it's just makes it a little bit simpler and to follow that framework, it's already filled out, if that makes sense. Next one. So corporate compliance, I was just talking about this. So corporate compliance, you have environmental compliance and services, you have nerd compliance and you have risk management. And the risk management area is more of a quasi department. It's, if you want to hit next slide. It's really a department one, it's right now is myself, obviously. And so, but we do have two contractors. We have a contractor that we use, that's a risk manager, has experience in risk management. And we have a contractor that perform, performs audit services that we'll be using to basically solidify that department, how that works. We do have insurance management. So from the standpoint of property liability insurance, that is falls under me and we'll be managing that. And then the enterprise risk management side, next slide, is where we'll be basically going through that identify, evaluating the risk. And then we'll be helping develop risks, response and remediation plans with the department. Again, that's how we walk through that process. How can we remediate and then respond to that risk and then have a plan? We like to establish metrics. The metrics, we need to somehow determine where we are in that risk process. Bill, one, a more of a real time process during the month, it's increasing, depending on natural gas prices are going up. We have increased risk right now. And so we want that to be real time, but we actually want metrics around it. There's a ton of metrics out there. We want to make sure we're gathering the metrics and make it the right choice and know where the risk is at that time. So we make sure, number one, it's high. What are we doing currently? So for example, during the recent strike of the railroad strike, well, almost a strike, I guess. There were certain risks that came up at the utility and that was one. And that's one of the things we got together and discussed. Hey, if this occurs, it's getting close. What are we going to do? We start working out those plans. And so that's where you see the process happening and that's where you see that real time response. And finally, reporting, reporting is going to come back to the board. We're just going to bring you back the high level risk, the significant risk utility. And we're going to talk about those, how we're addressing those, how we're addressing with the board, or if we can address them. And we talked about that before, there will be certain risk that we probably can't address just because of the inherent job of the utility, right? There's certain duties that we're doing that they're going to be a risk. Next slide. So the next steps is adoption of the board policy. I believe you have a copy of the board policy. We'll come back in a few weeks and hopefully you don't have too many questions or changes. Hopefully you just love it and you're like, we're adopting it. And then we'll go ahead and do that, move forward. Remediation and response plans, we're working right now to go through that prioritization process. And we hope once we finish that prioritization process in November, we'll go ahead and start working on those remediation response plans. And then hopefully by the end of the year, I can communicate and report to you, number one, here where we are, here's our inherently dangerous, our risky areas, our top fifteen, based on the second staff and we came to that decision, these are a top fifteen risk. And this is what we're doing and we'll have actual metrics around that. And what we're going to be doing during the year, who actually owns that risk? And that's a big one. There will be someone appointed to that risk and then will own that risk. They'll be responsible for providing metrics, but also responsible for where we are in that risk, that, that process for that risk, right? And so that's the end of my presentation tonight. Okay. And real quick, I think continuous ongoing, this is a continuous, ongoing process. I want to be clear of that. Just because the board policy is not ongoing process, but after we get the board policy, the way our objectives are, a strategy as we move forward, it's a continuous process. So after we identify, it just doesn't stop. It's a continuous process and there could be new risk that pop up and we evaluate those and we put them in the risk matrix. Well, so it's a continuous process. It doesn't really stop. And so we're going to find out what's the best way to report those to you to make sure you have the information in front of you. That's all. Have any questions?
No, it's a good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maurice. It's kind of an area that we haven't explored in the past. So, I mean, you know, we certainly haven't had a person like Maurice in place to, uh, manage to see there. So, uh, we'll, we will be following up. We'll report back to the board and, uh, kind of give you an insight of where we are. So just a few miscellaneous comments. Yesterday I met with the Economic Development Task Force of the UG. We're attempting to lay out schedules, kind of been hit and miss with some of the meetings we've had, but we did commit to, what does the next six months look like? And then what are those topics that we need to place on the agenda? What do we need to actually accomplish as a, as a task force? And then who do we need to invite in? In order, in order to better understand where we're going with economic development and then how do we loop in? The consultants that, uh, the UG is bringing on board to kind of provide some type of direction on to the UG as to where they should be going and how they should be addressing economic development. So BP plays a cr- critical role in that. So we'll see, uh, you know, how those consultants advise us and, and then where, where do we go? Over the next few months with, uh, with our work there. Did you talk to another commissioner? So the Energy Efficiency Task Force hadn't met in a while. But he's, he's in the process of trying to schedule a meeting soon. I'll let the board know, uh, when that work takes off again. Terms of county administrative search, uh, do have a new, uh, search firm in place. That work, that firm has already started to reach out. I, uh, have a meeting scheduled, uh, with that firm to just have an individual, uh, meeting with them to talk through a certain process. Mayor Harrington will be meeting with them and, uh, as well as a few other people. But in a couple of weeks, we do have, uh, meeting already scheduled with the four task forces to come back together to begin our work again on finding a replacement for the interim county administrator. My guess is since we, we had to start over, uh, that person probably won't be named until next year, you know, this late in the year. Then finally, last Thursday, few of us, uh, Water Department, Lori, Angie and I went over to the Unified Government, uh, Full Commission Meeting. They did approve our KDHE revolving loan request for the additional funds. Table was a long meeting, uh, so we were there late at night. And, uh, but it did pass with a nine to zero vote. So, uh, so we are, we did get the green light to move forward with it. So that's all I have for comments. So I'll turn it back over to you, Madam President, unless you have questions. So Commissioner, Economic Development. Okay. So Commissioner Johnson is the chair, I'm co-chair, uh, Rick Kendall is on it. Daniel Silver is on it from the chamber. Uh, I can get you a list. I don't, I don't, I can't remember off the top of my head, everybody that's on it, on that, uh, task force. Okay, okay, okay. Okay. And, and Commissioner Ramirez, uh, is the chair of the Energy Efficiency Task Force.
Right. And that's the one that hasn't met yet?
I'm sorry.
Did you say they have not met yet?
Uh, we haven't met in a few weeks and I did talk to him Thursday night and he's working out a few scheduling, uh, working through a few issues. He will be scheduling another meeting soon.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
We'll start, uh, board comments. Jeff, start with you.
Uh, I know everyone's going to echo the really good presentations. Actually, what I want to say was the, the conversations and discussions we had tonight were very educational for me. So, uh, between staff and other board members, I really appreciate all the, the, uh, back and forth. Cause it, it helps me look at things different ways. So thank you all.
Appreciate all the information that was provided this evening. Very beneficial, especially for us to go, go forward and make these decisions. So I just want to thank everybody for the time that they've, that they've put in to prepare those reports. Sometimes my test that it's, you know, a waste of time, but it's not because it definitely helps us. So that's all I, I, I.
Oh, yes, I too would like to echo as was suggested, uh, both, um, Ms. Austin, Mr. Moss and those that brought on the staff presentations on our budget and risk management. It does help certainly me, uh, and, and us to understand very clearly where we are. And, um, of course, how we protect ourselves and move forward. Thank you both. Thank all three of you, uh, for that. Also, I'd like to, um, once again, reiterate my concern for streamlining how payments are received from whatever source, what we heard from the, uh, the rate payer who was here this evening. I do appreciate that one was resolved, but we need, I, I would hope that we would get a clearer handle on how more quickly we can have that, especially with our lobby remaining closed until we're able to work out if the lobby will be reopened to get some of the bottlenecks out of the kiosks. I hear from people all the time who have to come here and the kiosk is not working. I'm sensitive to that. I hope that we'll find a way to streamline the receipt of monies that come into us, not worry about which agency, et cetera, et cetera. Wanted to mention too, Madam President and members, um, I, last time, um, one of our members was talking about changes in classification to the pilot and what that means. I'm still trying to wrap my arms and get my head around what the pilot is, uh, and its existence, its length of time and how we might find it and other charges bifurcated from our bill. You know, the rates are going up. We talked about that last time. The UG's rates, their taxes are scheduled to go up in sixty days. And we bear the brunt of that. And I would hope again, uh, as we've suggested before, that we find some resolution that shows how much, if you, if you're using your electricity or you're using your water, you consume, you're responsible for. And then we're able at least to say the UG ought to be transparent about how much they're charging with the pilot and everything else. I, 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 I just, I just hope that we can at least agree to try to do that because we bear the brunt of that. And when this, when the bills hit in mid-February and everyone has sticker shock because it's the UG charges, we, the BPU are going to bear the public relations nightmare that finally, um, I talked about opening the lobby, um, getting access to these meetings, though we're now, I think, I don't know if we're video or not. A couple of people have asked how to do that. If you go to bpu.com, I went there tonight. We weren't able to find the phone number, uh, very easily. It's very difficult. I would like to ask that between now and the next meeting, we find some way that when you go to bpu.com, the phone number to call in, which I've now found out, thanks to Mr. Camp during a break, is one eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine, that that somehow jumps out at you, uh, that, that you don't have to weed through, um, a website that is difficult to navigate, uh, for those that want to join the meeting either by phone and certainly by Zoom. Thank you, Madam President.
Rose. I'm sorry, Mr. Mylan.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to echo and cover things that Mr. Elliott talked about. And we speak to Mrs. Jones, it's left here. I'd like to take the opportunity to explain the position of the cost of service held in terms of checks. You indicated that you expect to have presentation to the board, uh, next board meeting. I appreciate that. You'll find out the multitude of the number of checks that come in. That's hard to identify the substance, where it came from. The amount, et cetera. So don't go whole harm and start getting erratic. Miss Simpson will explain to you the difficulty, the process, the checks for payment. That's money. So keep in mind, overmind and listen to the staff. They'll explain to you, not bad to them here at the podium. Give them a chance to bring it forward, a reasonable presentation. So you'll understand the magnitude of the number of checks, the process from everybody. Different organizations, so forth. So you've got to be careful. We're dealing with money that could be, uh, very detrimental to some companies for whatever reason. Uh, the other thing I have is the usually government and you keep talking about the pilot. The pilot is a determination made by the usually government. It's a discretion. We ought to be siblings of that policy is. It's amazing that seeing that no one understands the policy but myself. It pays for the general fund, police department, sheriff department, school board, junior college board. The rest of goes after discretion, general fund. It's plain and simple. Limitedization. So we need to understand where that comes from. So at that point, we understand that usually government, until we able to separate a check that we make or that the public makes to the board of utility, it goes for water service, electric power. That's what we do. It was anything else except for taxes, UG, until we can make sure UG sends the public a bill for all its charges, trash collection, sewer, the pilot, et cetera. It will never resolve the problem. We are halfway there now because only bill itself explains the charges from each entity, BPU plus UG that comes forward. But it's not going in place until the public knows that that bill need to be separated. Blame BPU for what we do, water, electric power. That's what we do. Until it's separate from the UG, we will never resolve the problem. Thank you.
Um, I only have one question, Madam Chair. And Bill, I know last week in the work session, um, we had talked about getting the information for contractors by department and the, I guess, the costs associated with those. Do you have an ETA on when we might see that?
Well, I know we're still working on it, Lori, about how much longer, another week or so?
Thank you. I don't have anything else, Madam Chair.
Eight ten.
In the board room to either take action in an open session or to adjourn.
This is Jeff, so moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
They moved in second and roll call, please.
Hi.
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 Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
And we are back in open session.
This is Jeff. I move to extend back into executive session for fifteen minutes.
Says Rose, I second.
Roll call, um, Bryant.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Hi.
I guess I'll start. This is, this is Jeff. I move to adopt the second contract extension for the general manager effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three.
It's been moved in second and.
Well, we have to wait until we get everybody in here for this.
For, uh,
Here they come.
For the vote. Okay, it's, there's been a motion in the second. Say the motion again, Jeff.
So I'll, I'll repeat the motion. This, this is Jeff. I move to approve the contract, the second contract extension for the general manager for two years effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three.
All right. It's been moved and seconded for the contract extension. Roll call, please. I guess, yeah. Okay. You have discussion, Rose. Okay. Roll call, please. Roll call Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Brenneman.
Hi.
Haley.
No.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
No.
That motion carries. Is there a second?
I second that emotion.
The Bob made the motion, Jeff. Second. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
Roll call Bryant.
Hi.
Hi.
Brenneman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.